I had to hear about.
I think she heard about in three minutes.
Yes.
It is.
There's one flag.
Oh, he is. There was one picture I saw on Facebook.
Hopefully the helmet comes off.
That was the helmet.
Come on. Yeah.
Yeah. It can't be.
I think they changed them.
They did too.
I gave her three years apart of a T and they wanted her on her stomach. They were flinging, they wouldn't let me.
Yeah.
And she.
They used to say that they would choke if they're on their stomach.
Or if they're on their backs, that they would choke. If they're on their stomachs. And if they're on the stomach, they stutter, so they want to on their backs. Yeah. There's the rules change. I thought I went to the show me, she was supposed to be on the back.
Yeah.
And I mean, it was like three weeks and she was not asleep. And my mom's just like, flip her over. So we flipped her over and ooh, sleeping time was gone.
I mean, it's fine sleeping on his back, but he's looked, he would turn his head up like this. I totally.
So it's like the side of his head. Oh.
And she'd go in and like change him, you know?
No.
Ours were all on their stomach. They would like learn to tell me like walk on their stomach. Like ball right on there.
Carpet grubs right there in Austin. You must be doing pets dancing too. And break down.
And after he can flip over, he switches on his tongue.
Yeah.
I can't wait to see what happens with the next one.
Good evening, it's seven o'clock, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Metro City Council to order. Roll call please.
Lawler.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yep.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Laramo.
Here. Please stand in for me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the ten day of agenda?
So, so move second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Cowman.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So.
One second.
Roll call.
Willamette.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
At this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to address the council? Mr. Woods.
I want to comment on resolution twenty-two twelve. I'd like to comment on what I see as fiscal irresponsibility on the part of the city administrator and the council. Local life and sales tax money was voted on and passed because fifty percent was supposed to be given back to the people in the form of getting their property taxes reduced. It looks to me like you're stealing money from the people. Two hundred thousand dollars from the people's tax relief fund. To provide eighty-one thousand dollars for a park. Eighty-eight thousand employee benefits and thirty thousand in the general fund. You talk of thirty-three thousand to build a stage, baseball concrete pad and Kilinger Park improvements. I see no need for a stage as we've got adequate shelters. We want forty-eight thousand dollars for programs and a vehicle for pup for the park and rec director. We have city trucks. We've got unused SUV behind the fire station that could be used rather than spend money on a vehicle for one person. When we have trucks available. Also, people who've attended events, concerts or programs can pay entrance fees. I don't see why we need to put that money out there for that. I'm going to ask you therefore to say no to resolution twenty-two-two dash twelve. Thank you.
Thank you, good times. Helene.
Hi, my name's Helene Webb, I live at three oh one, Third Street Northeast. I just have a concern. I notice we're having a lot of water breaks and granted that happens. But why are we hiring somebody to come in and fix them when we have our own backhoe and our own public works department? To do that, that's why they bought the backhoe a few years ago, maybe twelve years ago, to do our own repairs. Now we're hiring people to fix our water lines. And that's, and how much is that costing us? How much is that costing us? Like the city here across from Casey's, we had six people standing around. Are we paying all those people that are standing around? And we hired a baker, electric or baker to fix the water line that popped over there?
I'm not sure if we hired.
Yeah, we're not.
Why did we use our own equipment? That's why we bought the backhoe. I don't understand why we're not using our own equipment that we bought to fix these problems. We're just spending way too much money hiring other people to come in here and fix this problem when we have the equipment to fix it ourselves. So, I hope you guys can say, well, why are we doing that? You know, why do we have a backhoe? Why did we buy a backhoe?
Thank you. Anybody else? Next up, Wendy Hansen.
Good evening, everyone, I'm here again on trying to get you manage your horse and challenge the agricultural livestock in town. In city limits. As you all know, I'm only in city limits by a couple houses and I have spoke with several of you personally. And I'm hoping that someone will vote on a discussion because last time it was just kind of X-nated with two people and no discussion or any votes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve her request and if it's seconded, then we can discuss it, is that the way it would work? And we have a second.
I think discussing is a good idea. I think it gives a lot more clarity, gives us a chance to have some discussion. Brad, since you want to make the push, do you want to kick it off with your thoughts?
Yeah, it says in Iowa, code of Iowa, section seven seventeen B point eight in chapter fifty-five point oh five six five. Says it's unlawful for citizens to keep livestock in the city without written consent. So, the way I interpret it, it means it could happen with written consent from the council. And Will and I went out there on the twelfth and visited with her and her husband. And it looks like they have the necessary space in the buildings to properly care for the animal. They have a chain link fence surrounding the backyard with the exception of the east side of their property is a privacy fence. And then they have approval from their neighbors, as she has mentioned. Some of the cons, I can see how it could set precedents for future issues. But I think that would need to be on a base by base or case by case issue. At the time, they do not have a way to transport the animal if it was to become sick. They don't really have a concrete plant in place if the horse was to get out of the fence. She said they would just go and round up the horse and bring it back. Kind of like if a dog was to get out. And then also as deer run expands to the south. Future neighbors may not be okay with horses in their backyard or question why there are horses inside the city limits. Looking at the map that she provided us, it looked like there was only one property, Ryan Circle Northeast. There was a home that would barely be touching the property, would be on the northwest corner of her property, but that is surrounded by trees. And from my understanding, they wouldn't be able to take those trees down because they're on your property, is that right?
That's correct.
From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, the council has denied requests for roosters, goats, horses. With the exception being in twenty eighteen when goats were allowed as long as the kids were in FFA. So exceptions have been made in the past. So, that's where I'm at. And Will, do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you for having us out there and communicating our property.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah. Like Brad had mentioned too, I think there have been exceptions in the past, but it also kind of worries me, I want to set a precedent for livestock and unfortunately you are in the city limits. So I think that, you know, you're definitely capable of taking care of an animal. I see, you know, you're definitely seem like a responsible person. But the other thing too that I was thinking about was with neighbors, you know, people change and move houses and you know, you may get one that may not like it down the road, so.
I mean, you can say that about the cattle farm across the street from me, I mean, I know their grandfather Dan did this whole event, but you know, people can move in and complain about that.
One thing I have to add is that when the council did grant the exemption for the horses, or not for the horses, for goats. It was only for a two-year timeframe. So, looking at the average lifespan of a mini horse, you got about at least another fifteen years for a healthy horse to be there. A lot can change in the fifteen years and we have a lot of development that's going to be happening in that area.
And again, the cattle are still going to be there in fifteen years. There's thirty head cattle and every one of them are bigger than this horse. There's dogs in my neighborhood that are bigger than this horse that are more obnoxious, annoying, more likely to bite children, more likely to get out of their fences.
I don't personally, I've thought a lot about it and I wasn't supportive of it originally. I don't have a vote, so that's just my comments, but after thinking about it. I just don't think there's enough to grant an exemption to a standard law that applies to everyone else just to, because you want a mini horse. So, that's all my comments I have to add. Anybody else have any other discussion?
I would like to point out that the city limits doesn't stop at the county line road, that it goes on east of there. So you live more than a few houses from the city limits also.
I voiced my opinion the last meeting and my opinion hasn't actually changed. If there was a, you know, a timeframe again for a year or two because of a kids program, it might be a little bit different in my opinion. But at this time, I don't believe we should be offering exemptions for livestock in the city limits. I know we have the cows that are there, but they've been there for a very, very long time.
And they're going to be there for a very, very long time.
Yeah.
So what's the difference?
He has been, or that lot has been in this town for.
Exactly, he's been in the town, I'm a newcomer, so you're taking it out because I'm a newcomer. If I was a newcomer, it would be different.
The ordinance was written and that was grandfather Dan's prior to the writing of that ordinance. So, we can't go make him get rid of all of his cows because it was grandfather Dan. If it was now and he was in that same property and there wasn't any livestock and he wanted to add it, it probably wouldn't happen. It shouldn't. That's the bar we're setting.
But since knowing that he's not going anywhere, what is your fear? What is the precedent and how was any precedent for getting changes, all just going to be the same for the rest of the?
Sometimes if there's not cows on that property for a specific amount of time, I think it's six months, then it would, he would not be allowed to have cows there anymore. No matter who he was or how long he was there. But because when the ordinance was made, they were there, we can't make somebody get rid of something. And since he's kept them there since, that's why he isn't allowed to have them.
Anybody else have anything that's like that?
Roll call.
Hoover.
No.
Lawler.
No.
Willamette.
No.
Roberts.
No.
Cowman.
Yes.
Thank you for your time. Next, we have the public interest for the proposed maximum property tax levy. Is there anybody that'd like to address the council about the proposed maximum levy? John?
John Woods, two oh four, Third Street Northeast. Instead of raising our taxes, I'd like to see you take the extra money out of the six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that's in the public.
Safety.
Safety fund instead because it's probably going to be a while before that gets elected in anyway, so I'd rather see you take the money out of that than take the money out of my pocket.
Thank you. Anybody else about the same topic? Next up, we have considered for approval resolution twenty-two-two tac ten approving the FY twenty-three maximum property tax levies. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. One second. Any other discussion?
What is this amount going up per property? This point, from point, was that nine point eight five last year to nine point nine?
Well, this, the nine point nine five seven five three is what we're saying our maximum will be.
Right.
Right now with the budget that you guys will prove at the next meeting is at nine point eight nine, which is up slightly from previous year, yes.
Which is establishing the maximum.
Yeah, this is, this was the new requirement by the state last year where we have to publicize and have a public hearing and that the max, the levy will not be higher than that nine point nine five. But we all, we will be, we'll be lower than that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lawler.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes. And next up, we have a quick presentation by Ben Dale of the commander of VFW post twelve, two oh eight in Altuna.
My name is Ben Dale, thank you for the time this evening, ladies and gentlemen, the council. We just started a brand new VFW post in Altuna. We are currently renting at the Shriners in Altuna. What the VFW brings to a community is a lot of different things, it brings our veterans together. Myself, I served for thirteen years, deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan. Full-time, I'm also the state service officer. What we'd like to bring to each community from the east side of Pope County to the west end of Jasper County is the camaraderie that we share throughout our service. The VFW as a whole brings a lot of different scholarships to different communities. From the junior high to the senior high as well as our auxiliary with younger students. I believe this last year, the person that makes first place as it goes up through the runnings is offered a thirty thousand dollar grant for their college as they go through it and they've got multiple years to share it. I'm reaching out to each city council just to introduce ourselves. We have a lot of members within your community as well as others. And just to try to build bridges. So we're also reaching out to, I believe there's American Legion out here. The other nonprofits within eastern Pope County are the Legion, the Altshausen, like I said before, it was the Shriners. So, we would just like to introduce ourselves, try to help out, we want to get involved in each community. We're community focused and family based because a lot of my members are younger from Desert Storm to current. We do have a couple Vietnam era vets, but our focus is the younger generation looking for that family thing to do. So, and if you guys have parades or summer fests or anything like that, we'd love to come out, pop a tent or put a vehicle in your, in your parades to just let our presence be known. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you for your service. Next, we have considered for approval resolution twenty-two-two tac twelve approving budgetary transfers for fiscal year twenty-two from lost to general fund to employee benefit funds. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. One second.
Do you want me to explain what this, what is? This is what you guys approved at the budget last year. This is transfers in fiscal twenty-two, not twenty-three dollars, so it's not going to any of the items that were mentioned. This is how we lowered the levy for fiscal year twenty-two, which is the current year we're in. You guys approved that we would have used lost money to lower the levy to cover the employee salaries and employee benefits as opposed to levy, levy for those amounts. So now this is just putting those funds into the right funds because those funds are getting a little low, so that's why I did it at this time of the year instead of waiting at the end of the year, if that makes any sense.
It's already been approved.
Yeah, this is fiscal twenty-two dollars, not fiscal twenty-three, which is what the upcoming budget figures would be, that's where you're spending money on the stage and all that other stuff.
Any other discussion for this item? Roll call.
Roberts.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Next, we have approval of the resolution to support the new Des Moines Airport International Terminal. They've been working on this project for quite a long time. They did their request for funding per capita. I think it's pretty affordable for a benefit for a lot of people in this area. Do I have a motion to approve?
Um, I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Cowman.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes. Next item is setting the time and place for a public hearing for the CDBG application for water main replacement phase three. I have a motion to, at for March seventh. Is there a motion to approve? So moved, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
And next, we had some highlights from the FY twenty-three budget.
Council asked for some highlights of where some of the changes are in twenty-three that we're planning on spending more or spending less. So I gave them a highlights, it was in the packet if you got it online. The big dollar amounts, if you want me just to sum up a little bit. We're expecting increased in building inspections. Police and fire got a little increase in their budget. Roads were inspecting an increase of seventy-three thousand dollars, so we could spend that on more road improvements. The cost of sanitation is going up, garbage and recycling, so we will have more expenses in that line, so we had to increase that by about twenty-four thousand. Library is getting a slight bump mainly in salaries and business, building maintenance and janitorial. The park is getting an increase of thirty-three thousand. The majority of that will go to building a permanent event stage and also about eight thousand to improvements to Kilinger Park. Matt's getting, or the recreation department's getting a bump of about forty-eight thousand to allow for more recreational events in town. He's got a string of, and a partial for a vehicle for him to drive for the park and the rec events. Cemetery, eight thousand dollars bump up for, we're going to have a dedicated employee in the cemetery for more hours. Community beautification, we've got an increase of expenses of a hundred thousand dollars to kind of plan for improvements up and down Center Avenue. I plan on forming a committee, get a few people in town that are interested in joining me in reviewing what we want to do on, on Center Avenue. I will be putting out an email probably within the next month because I've had some exciting pro, or brochures dropped off at city hall recently on some ideas for up and down Center Avenue. And then the five thousand dollars that we pledged to the Des Moines Airport Terminal. City Hall, we asked for a seven thousand dollar increase. Most of it's going to be in the microphone system and replace furnace. And I think that was the overall changes from last year's budget in the general fund. Does council want any more details or want me to go over anything else in that area?
Thanks, Pam.
Okay.
Next up is reviewing our street improvement.
I put this in here because it does factor into our budget cycle. Originally, we had planned on doing the northeast side of the town, Vine Oak Arch, Second, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, all on the northeast side. But now their phase three got pushed back slightly, so we won't be able to get that in probably in fiscal twenty-three. At least in the fall, maybe in the spring. So I swapped them, put forward High Street, Market Avenue Southwest, Mitchell Southwest and Mill Street Southwest from Elm to Center as maybe where we should focus this year's fiscal dollars on to do streets. The thing that's in the back of my head is that we will probably be doing a water project on those streets in fiscal twenty-four. So I'm kind of, do we want to go ahead and invest in repairing those streets knowing in two years? So if there are any other, Brad's shaking his head, no. If there are any other ideas on which streets should move forward, we have money to do streets this coming spring and summer. But if everything's going on to be water projects, are we just going to wait another year to do any road repairs? Or does anyone have any good ideas on what roads? And I don't need to know this tonight, but this is just to put it in you guys' heads so we can kind of, as a group, come up with some specific roads we should be doing?
Let's hope we can do the after phase three report.
It would be, if we get the grant in April, we would potentially be able to do the roads, the after phase three roads in the fall. If not, you're looking at next spring.
Are we going to do the ones listed, the four listed in fiscal year twenty-two then?
Those I moved up there and then when I looked at the maps on where the next water phase would be, that's phase four. And I would hate to think that we would do that many roads and then in two years, if we could do phase four in two years, turn around and having to redo those roads again. So right now, I don't have any schedule to be done in fiscal twenty-two. And we have I mean, I have probably a hundred thousand dollars in roads that we could do some roads in twenty-two. So I need some good ideas. I mean, I know I've got some roads down there in twenty-four and twenty-five, but I don't think they're ready to be done yet.
And I don't think that if we're going to be doing phase three hopefully this year, I don't see why we'd want to move forward with doing the ones that we're going to have to do for phase four either. At this point, I would just wait and see what we hear back about phase three.
Okay, I just want to make sure you guys know, you're sitting on money that could, you know, and the citizens have a right to ask, why are you not preparing? We're doing a major road repair.
And we've gotten some complaints recently regarding center or excuse me, cotton where I think where the dip is getting worse where they tried to put in the culvert.
That's Sixth Street, not cotton.
Well, it's cotton.
Oh, it's cotton.
Oh. I, that's the thing I thought I heard was on Sixth Street where the dip.
That's where down there, no, I'm talking about where they replaced the culvert, but they put it in the wrong spot and pulled it out when I was settled and it's quite a dip. And the same complaint on Mill, it's like a launch pad there in front of the buildings there. Yeah, there's a big dip and then those animal covers are sunk down too, so.
We have another dip by Casey's and we have another one.
The dip by Casey's did get some work last year.
I hear about the one by Casey's, the one by my friend Mike.
Do we need to raise the manhole covers? Yeah.
I mean, and if you raise, we have damaged vehicles by raising the manhole covers because the tire goes over it and it.
No, we're going to get damaged vehicles by how low they are under.
But if they're too low, then we have infiltration into our system and then we have other problems.
My only worry was mainly with cotton because that's not on this list at all because it was just done. So.
It gets very slick, especially if we have any sort of freezing precipitation.
Yeah, it's water right there, I mean.
And you can easily slide through that intersection.
Yeah. How about the one by that ball field by how it works?
My question is, is this isn't a use or lose it situation.
No, we have the funds, but it's just, it's been, we didn't really do any road works in twenty-one. And if we don't do any in twenty-two, I just don't want to be sitting on money.
But the money doesn't go anywhere.
No, the money's in the road use fund, so yes.
We'll get a lot better deal if we do it with the phase three.
Okay.
I completely agree. I, we might need to fix up a few things.
I, we might need to fix up a few things when we...
Yeah, there's still patching and all. I mean, there's money for that.
But the county's got all the roads around us done, so we shouldn't expect any, hey, you owe us half of this for...
That $180,000 bill that came in that one two years ago, yeah, that was fun. Okay, that's all, that's why I wanted you guys to review the street plan.
By Barnes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that got fixed.
I fixed it.
Randy Brown right in the corner.
Randy Brown.
And Reagan.
Next up, we have our updates from department heads, council members, and myself. Mike, do you want to kick it off?
Certainly. Number 41 rang out this afternoon. If you guys haven't heard, the siren has been fixed. Bill and City Hall did a great job getting that coordinated. I appreciate everybody doing that. That comes out of the fire department budget. I haven't seen a bill yet, so I'm waiting for that and see how that works out. Though in the last, since the last meeting, we've had a rather cool donation to the fire department. We had a Claris Ranger given to us, which we will utilize as a firefighting slash medic tool, something we've been looking for for a while. So, I'm pretty excited about it. We're looking at getting some, some things going with that and getting it going for spring, for grass fire season. So, it's one of those tools that will benefit a lot of people in town and out. And it'll give us some wheels during Thomas Mitchell days and some of the events that we get into. So, there'll be more to come on that, I promise. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Matt?
I guess it's my turn, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, I've been working on getting trivia ready for Friday night. So, if you don't have anything planned going on, we'll be up at the community center at seven o'clock. It's been a lot of fun. I really enjoyed doing the trivia. So, put yourself together a team and come on down and enjoy the festivities. Ronnie pointed me out to some fun DJ Bingo's, what it's called. So, I looked it up. It's a very cost-effective game to play, easy to operate and run. So, I downloaded the software and talked to the folks. And I'm going to be planning a DJ Bingo night in the very near future. As soon as I can figure out dates and times, that community center will be available. Been working really hard on preparations for summer. So, you know, that big list that I put out, there'll be additions and more things, more details coming out on all that stuff very soon. But, you know, with Ronnie's help, we've been putting together the calendar. She's been doing all the calendar. But, you know, everything's getting lined up for summer. We're pretty excited about it. I'm ready for it. Ready for summer.
It's Matt.
You bet.
Ronnie?
Matt, did you say 41 calls?
Mike?
You mean Mike? Yes.
I said Mike. No, you said Matt. Oh. 41.
I'll forgive you just this morning.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I really have is, I urge all of you to read the legislative updates because there are some pretty wild ones attacking cities. They are kind of coming at our home rule options. As the person that does rental inspections and works with, free with water billing and does nuisances, I reached out to Representative Lozzy because one of them is to allow landlords to keep rentals in their name and never tell us who lives there, when they move, when they don't move. So, those bills will be nearly impossible to track down unless we start making landlords pay for all of them. A couple of other ones, if you read closely, I mean, they were pretty horrifying when we were reading them on Friday. I mean, they're literally...
Ronnie told me to stop reading them.
I did. It just really seems like they're not taking what we do at the city level seriously. And it's, they think they can do it better, which I'm sure they do think that. But I think that we really need to reach out to them and let them know they need to kind of cool it. Because it's going to make our lives impossible. Nuisances are one of the things we're talking about. So, pretty much anything that we've cleaned up, anything we've made nice, anything we've added will not be viable if they get their way out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Brett? Nedra?
I just had the, we had the spaghetti dinner on Friday night and we had a good turnout. But we really appreciate the community coming out to help support us and at the community center. And we did take a deposit over to Sharon for her expenses. And then we have a parking recs meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 here at City Hall if anyone's interested. That's all I have.
Bill?
I attended the Polk County Emergency Management Meeting last week and mostly they did policy review and update. The Metro Waste Authority meeting was canceled for February. And I would like to point out that when we were working on the budget, we were working, most of the citizens seemed to be concerned about the services, things like that in town. And no one was concerned about how much that was going to cost. And so, we're going to continue working on the water distribution system and all of those things and get money for those. And people are really enjoying things up at the park.
Next, Bill?
Yeah.
Ronnie? Ronnie's right. I've had a couple of meetings with some legislative people. And I think most of those are going to get killed. It's been surprising what made it as far as it did. So, yeah, there's some scary stuff beyond even what Ronnie's talking about for cities. A lot of it has hidden costs that they don't consider. By the way, send an email. They're matters. All right, thank you. There's a lot going on with, at the county level of taking away buildings too. So, there's a lot of municipalities that'll be affected if a lot of this stuff passes.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Like I mentioned earlier, I am going to form a committee. I'm typically calling it Hometown Pride so that once we decide what we want to do on Center, maybe this group would want to work on some more areas in town and see what we can come up with. So, I'll be sending out an email probably within the next month to get some volunteers, of concerned citizens that want to help decide what we want to do down Center Avenue. Some good ideas and people willing to pitch in and look at things and go from there. And, no, 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 Market County's on March 14th, which is the third Monday, no, the second Monday of the month, will have a special meeting at 6:00 PM. And that's when the team that does the broadband Wi-Fi in town will come in and do a presentation on what they can do to get free Wi-Fi in Mitchellville and what our options are and what that program would look like if it's something we wanted to look into. That'll be March 14th, Monday at 6:00 PM.
Here.
Here. Yes. It'll be a council meeting. It's a special meeting. But it'll be more of a presentation. You guys will have no, do no action, no business.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Derek wasn't able to make it this evening. He's not feeling the best. He said it's business as usual over at the PD. Ellen says she needs to schedule an electrician to come out and check some wires. I don't know if it's related to the fire or not, but there's a few things that she wants him to check out. And she's planning for spring and summer programming. For myself, I did want to read something I wrote real quick the other day. So, I think it's important to share about city board meetings. I expect citizens who attend other city meetings to give the chair of the meeting and the board or commission the same respect they would give myself and the council. I also expect these boards to conduct themselves as professional representatives of the city. These meetings are open to the public, not a meeting of the public. If you are afforded the opportunity to speak at these meetings, the board is not required to respond and please be respectful. Other than that, I attended the mayor's roundtable on the 9th and mayor training part two on the 10th through the league of cities. I've been working with Matt over at Parks and Rec on a few things and some things with the library as well. And that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Everybody wants to stay?